I'd like to call to order this Tuesday, May 16th, 2023, town council meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please, ma'am?
Mr. East?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Ratliff? Mr. Clontz?
Here.
Mr. Reese?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here. All right, if you would stand for the pledge of allegiance, that will be led by Councilman Clark, and then the invocation will follow by Councilman East.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, as we come together this evening, we give thanks to you for your many blessings. We ask that you would guide us in all matters. Please grant us wisdom, and may all we do be pleasing to you. In your name we pray, amen.
I'd like to welcome all the guests that are in person and that's online. Thank you for coming out. Modifications to public session. So we will start with our public hearings. The first one will be FY 2023, 2024 general fund. If I could get the staff report, please.
This is the third budget that I have submitted to you all, and I, as I told some of you earlier, it was probably the toughest one because of the different circumstances that are all of us are living with right now. But particularly from a budgetary standpoint, the fact that the state has yet to approve any changes to the biennial budget makes it difficult for us to anticipate what would normally be some positive changes, occasionally some negative changes from the state budget. And we also, until just very recently, were waiting for some figures from the county in terms of different activities where they provide some funding to us. And we had difficulty this year in getting the many different estimates on our various insurance that we have through VA Corp. So a lot of uncertainty as it related to those budget kinds of issues. And then we all, as both citizens and as a business, are dealing with inflation that is unheard of. Fuel prices that have just really rocked our budget significantly, and a lot of changes in our utilities. And as a organization that provides 24/7 services and has to have lights and public safety people and pump stations running and everything else, while we've had the same, roughly same percentage of growth this year as we had last year, a lot of it has been consumed just with those very items that I mentioned. The council did make as a priority on several occasions the issue of retaining our employees, and we've done a good job of doing that so far and in looking at what other communities and what the state has indicated, particularly for the school system. We have stretched ourselves in order to be able to recommend a 5% cost of living adjustment. I am pleased to report that we've just managed to fill the planner position that's been vacant, but it's getting increasingly difficult in finding candidates because our salary ranges are not as competitive as our neighbors who have more money than we do and have more discretion in that regard. I have provided for you all a list of those outside agencies and organizations that have made requests and that we have funded. Some of them we are recommending, we fund them less than last year. The majority are kind of just held at a steady pace, which is really what is happening with the bulk of our budget. I'm going to, while we're at this point, mention the water and sewer funds because we need to have public hearings on each of these items, but the sum total of our budget really includes several other, what we call enterprise funds, activities. The water and sewer fund, we're studied several years ago, three years ago now, and recommended for regular increases over the next several years, and that was estimated to be at 6%. That is the percentage that is recommended for water rates. That allows us to continue to create a capital reserve as well as put money aside for future debt. We do have a languishing project that we had anticipated we'd be paying debt on this year, and that's the Brookmont project, but it's still underway. And so it'll be this time next year when we actually start making debt service payments. So that's helped us a little bit. The sewer rates unfortunately are having to go up as we recommended to 7%. We've had a very significant increase, over $250,000, just for the Peppersterry Authority that we participate in, and our participation is roughly, I think, about 40% of their total budget. But we have increased costs for chemicals and other items that also are part of the pre-treatment activity that's related to pumping our sewage to the regional authority for treatment there. And this year, we have a new fund that started the 1st of January, and that is our solid waste fund, where we're keeping track of the contract that we have with GFL, the payments that we receive on behalf of our residents, and then the expenditures to include the convenience center, which is funded as a part of that activity. So each of those, and you'll see a number of public hearings on your agenda, each of those has been advertised, which is required by code. But we would ask that you have separate hearings on each one so that when we get to your next meeting, which is scheduled, I think, for June the 6th, you will actually adopt resolutions on each and every one of those items. And I would just mention that the last one, I think it is listed here, we had yet to appropriate for the six months of this year, the solid waste activity. And so you have a resolution after a public hearing tonight on that matter. I'd be pleased to answer any questions that the council may have. We are fortunate this year, and then our insurance rates for health insurance for our employees did not change at all. I know that other communities have experienced an increase there, and that again helped us to make the necessary adjustments in this year's budget. And you have received both in advance and through the ad a schedule of both current appropriation for various accounts and then the projected amount that we are requesting you approve for next year.
Does council have any questions?
Just, I hadn't thought about this before, but the health insurance, are we self-insured or we do?
No.
Okay.
We're not financially in any kind of position to self-insure. We're in a group.
Okay.
It's called Local Choice. It is a Anthem product, but it is provided to small jurisdictions. So we're lumped into a group of smaller localities and smaller entities. You could have a service authority of a certain size that also could be a member, and it's based upon the experience of that group. And we do have an excellent health insurance program that includes dental as well as vision.
That's wonderful.
Coverage, and have, well, in our particular, and I may be giving you too much information, but in our particular program, the employee only has no expense unless they go for the higher plan. And so they only have to participate if they have additional insureds in the family.
Okay, great, thank you.
I just have a question regarding the regional authority and the increase. Did you say it was 250 or 500?
The total increase for all of the activities, the pre-treatment and the authority.
That was 500.
A little over 500,000. And I did send out to you all today, and it's in front of you, a correction because as I reread, that it really made it sound like it was totally, all that money was totally going to the authority, and that's not the case.
Do we know what they, what did they, what did the regional authority attribute that increase to?
Well, there are several items. There are capital improvement items that we have to participate in. It's based upon flow, and they're normal operating expenses. And I would tell you, you know, that they have, not only this year, but in past years, they give a very nice salary adjustment to their employees. And it's higher than what we're recommending here.
And the reason I ask, and you touched on it there, the water flow or the flow, it seems like over the past number of years, we've struggled to really get our arms around the flow. And that's, I think the INI study was supposed to help that, or at least help us identify.
As we speak.
And do you, do you feel like that, that, do you feel like that will help long term?
Long term, we should be able to not, well, we should be able to definitely reduce, unless we have additional customers, but particularly the fact that we have water going into the system that doesn't really need to be treated as sewage. You know, the INI study, we have funded through the ARPA program. We do have a number of monitors that have been placed throughout the town system so that we can identify which parts of the town are contributing the most, INI. And that will then give us a roadmap of where to go to make repairs, replacements. We do have a balance of INI, ARPA money left to, to start on that. And then in next year's capital budget, we also anticipate some additional work. But I would also tell you that my understanding of the way part of the calculations go with the service authority, it's on a rolling average of several years. So even as we are able to decrease flow, it will take a couple of years for us to see the impact of that. And then obviously, if there are other factors that the service or resource authority is involved in, we would have to participate.
Yeah, that does, it just concerns me a little bit because that's been one area I just feel like we've never really, it's almost like throwing a number against the law and seeing if it sticks.
Well, I think part of the problem is that the 2019 was a particularly bad year, and I think the years before that were low as far as like heavy rains go. And so as we roll off those years, we're gonna, and there's just no, I mean, they, they kept us from the shock, but it just means that, you know, you got a bit of a tail there.
Right, yeah, well, we actually, and we've had issues with this for, it predates you. It's, it's been years that we've seen significant fluctuations in that number. So maybe the INI will certainly help some.
So in the capital budget, you said ARPA, we were funding the INI stuff that we've done currently through ARPA. The capital improvement plan doesn't have anything listed for INI for this upcoming budget, but starting the following year, it shows $50,000 each year.
What we have allocated will be sufficient to carry us through until.
Through, to carry through this current budget that we're looking at. And then what would the $50,000 year go towards beyond that point? Is that continued?
Be continuing to work on specific areas because there's not going to be just one area in the town where we need to make repairs or replacements in order to avoid that inflow.
To fund the replacement of the areas that we find that need to be replaced.
Well, that was my only question was, is that, is $50,000 a year enough? Or, I mean, is, I mean, I understand that we can't predict exactly what it's gonna be, but understanding that seeing a $500,000 or $250,000 increase in one year, you know, is it prudent to make that larger? Just to say, you know, if we can do it and make a difference, there's a, there's a lot of, we're saving more than a dollar for every dollar we spend, is the.
And once we have the results of these monitoring.
Okay.
Isis will know better.
Okay.
How many areas and what those costs would be now? That's an unknown, but we think we have enough to start us through that process. I would tell you that we started at, and Jackie can confirm this because she worked long and hard to bring 8% down to 7% for the sewer fund. So if we find that we need to be more aggressive in either the water or sewer fund in order to address INI, it's going to mean that we'll continue to have increases in those rates on a regular basis. So I think we're best to wait and see what those results are and then actually do a couple of areas and see what it ends up costing us to then be in a better position to budget. How much do we really need and how quickly should we progress? But it's not the kind of thing that you can do wholesale in any one given year. It's going to take multiple years.
I understand that. And is any of the money that we've requested through the congressionally directed funding, is that all water or is any of that sewer too?
All water.
All water, okay.
It was for two projects. We originally submitted three, and the congressman submitted two of the three.
Okay, thank you.
Does council have any other questions?
Oh, I had one question. I was looking through the list of contributions we make to various entities in the area, and I noticed that we make a $16,000 contribution to the airport commission.
That's a one-time contribution, and it's for clearing an area in order for them to have room for another hangar.
Okay.
And that's our pro rate share of that. We actually thought that they would have requested that money by now, but.
It just happened.
I talked to Aaron recently, and they're about ready to remake that request to him.
Okay, so that's not a yearly thing we make because I don't remember that from previous years. We don't make a.
Do we make an annual one too?
Okay. So is that 16,500, does that include the quarterly or is that?
That is a quarterly then.
Okay, so it's broken down into. Does anybody know what the history of that is? Because it's kind of far outside the town limits.
It is, and a former mayor of this town is the chairman.
Okay.
Board of the Airport Authority, which is closely aligned to the First Virginia Authority, which has the, what I call the Commerce Park immediately adjacent.
Right, that's where like Red Sun and Cameran and stuff are.
And we are a participant in that group as well. But that's an annual contribution that we make. $25,001 is our annual contribution to that Virginia First, and Mr. East and I are representatives on that particular authority. That one goes back in history, many, many years, when various jurisdictions as far to the north as the city of Roanoke and Roanoke County participated in the actual, both purchase of the land and then the placement of infrastructure in that very large parcel in order to attract new business to the community. But it has a significant amount of debt that has to be paid off and has an operating expense, and our annual contribution is very small by comparison to other communities. It's based upon population, but our annual contribution to that is actually in the operating budget. I think under the contributions page, does that sound right, Jackie?
Okay, any other questions? If not, I will open the public hearing for FY 2023, 2024 general fund. And as there's no one stepping up to speak, I will close the public hearing. Next, we'll move to FY 2023, 2024 general fund capital improvement. Can we have the staff report for that, please?
Yes, sir, and I did submit to you all today a change in that program. We received some good news. The state was making funds available to law enforcement agencies for different activities. Chief Nies supplied for the allocation that was given to the town for the funds that would be needed to construct the building that we had talked to you all about earlier for a regional K-9 facility as well as training. The state agency denied that use of the money, but instead told us we could use the money to purchase vehicles. And so what we have done in the capital budget is to take and remove from next year and the following year the need for any capital funds for police vehicle replacement. We will be able to purchase four with the money that has been approved for us. And then I have inserted for the same allocation for both next year and the following year, the same amount of funds for the construction of that building. So the total does not change in the capital budget, but its use does because of the limitations of the state in terms of how we could use those funds.
Is there an intention to increase? I know Chief Nies had given us a good overview of the building, the training, the facility on the mountain. Is there a, is there a thought to change the scope of that to?
No, we had, I think you had heard about what work was being done currently, and this would be a new building that would allow us to create a regional K-9 training activity.
Oh, so this is, this is different than the previous?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good, good.
I think, unless I'm mistaken, the new papers that we got are the same as the previous paper. Unless I'm crazy.
On the capital budget?
Yeah.
You should have sitting at your place the revised budget that shows.
I had a new one, but it looks the same.
Now, there is a police vehicle replacement, but it's pushed out to 2012, 2025, 2026.
First two years, now we don't need the funds for because of the grant. And then immediately below that, that should say building for training slash K-9. And we've taken the same figures that were in the original budget of 87, 249 in the first year and 130, 875 in the second year, and added those with a line item.
Oh, I got you.
That says building.
I need to find my glasses.
Don't, don't we all?
No, I got it. They look like the same lines to me.
Dollar amount was the same and it's very close.
We finally resorted to making all these lines because just taking a piece of paper and going across, we were still mixing things up. We don't normally have all these lines on a piece of paper.
So the question I had was actually on this was in regards to the station addition for the fire department.
That's actually money for design with the idea that we would hire someone to help us look at, could we put an addition on to the existing fire station? Rearrange some of the activities, but also have the bays large enough to have the taller, larger equipment in the future. It was something that was suggested that seemed to have the support of the council as we were doing tours. And certainly, I would tell you that from the chief's position as well as the individuals who are both volunteers and paid, that is an ideal location for a fire response. And I know that previous councils looked at multiple sites for a combined public safety building. But as I have, over the three years that I've been here, talked to both law enforcement and fire, they really do not see the need to be physically located together. And we are actually, with the help of our economic development staff person, we are looking for existing buildings that could be modified for police. And in fact, I have one in mind that I'd be happy to share with you all at another time. But we think that the fire department one is the most critical one at this point in time. And that amount is 10% of what we have gotten as a rough, very rough estimate of what it would cost to construct an addition. So we would, with those funds, go into a design phase and see what the true estimate would be for cost and then how we would reconfigure moving probably the overnight accommodations into the new building and making some other modifications internal to the existing building.
Thank you. Does council have any other questions?
I did have one question. Meter replacement for $260,000, is that just, I was under the impression, we, I know we, we had a resolution about, we only have one meter company and et cetera, et cetera. Is that just to replace a certain percentage of the meters every year?
It's five years at this amount.
Okay.
To replace all of the meters.
Okay.
And to also obtain new antenna for meters. And in fact, we ordered the first slug, which was in your approved budget for this year. But I recall we used ARPA money to fund all of the capital items that were approved for this year. And we got just last week or week before last a group of the antennas that we can put on existing meters because it's going to take us at least five years under this schedule to replace all the meters. And we ordered those back late summer, and we've gotten our first arrival. And they don't know when we're going to get the rest, and we need to, with this, go ahead and start ordering the next slug. But it's coming in very, very slow. And because of that, we've had, as Angie can attest to, a significant number of what we call no reads, where the gentleman who's the meter reader cannot just drive by and pick up the read from the computer, and he literally has to go back to every one of those. And it got as high as 400, wasn't it, Angie? We had 400 no reads.
Okay.
So fortunately, with some antenna that we had on hand and with this new delivery, we'll be able to eradicate all of those 400 so that it will expedite not only the reading, but then the actual billing because the delay that is experienced with having to go back and read, in that case, 400 meters manually, puts them behind in getting bills out as well.
So just, these are just old, meters are just failing due to age and?
Yeah, when you purchase them, they'll tell you they have a 10-year life.
Okay.
And most of these were installed all at the same time.
Okay.
11 years ago, I think. So it's not unexpected. But then some of them will last much longer than 10 years, but that's the anticipated life. And I've had that same experience in other communities. That's really what they anticipate. Our problem is we bought them 10 years ago or 11 years ago, all at one time.
Instead of it.
Instead of staggering them so that you'd have them running out, firing in different years so that you could.
Do it.
Replace it gradually as opposed to all at once. And of course, on this schedule, we're not replacing them all at once. So I think we'll have a better replacement schedule for the future this way, but it has.
Will we be able to triage the ones that we need to sort of replace the ones that are failing and?
Yeah, and that's exactly what this list of 400 is, you know. The meters have gone bad, and on an interim basis, we're putting these antenna on, which helps improve the read. But those meters need to be among the first to be replaced.
Okay, thank you.
And of course, we have new accounts coming on too, so.
Any other questions? I will open the public hearing for FY 2023, 2024 general fund capital improvements. As I see no one with questions, we will close the public hearing and move to FY 2023, 2024 water rates. If I could get the staff report, please, ma'am.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Council, as I mentioned earlier, we did have an independent review of our water and wastewater systems and those rates several years ago. And they did give us a plan, a phased plan, to increase the rates in order to provide a capital reserve, also to have a set aside in the operating expense, a reserve, and prepare for debt in the future years that we knew we would experience. This year's proposed rate increase is 6%, and that's applied to all levels of consumption and also to the non-resident rates. We have resident rates and then non-resident rates. They all are recommended for 6% increase.
Does council have any questions? Okay, if not, I will open the public hearing for FY 2023, 2024 water rates. And I will close the public hearing for that. Next up is FY 2023, 2024 water fund. If I can get the staff report for that, please.
And that's basically the report that I just gave you, the need for those rates. The water fund funds not only the distribution of our water, but the actual. but the actual operation of the filter plant where we both bring in water and treat water for consumption. And we've been paying a lot of attention recently to the water filtration plant and have already used quite a bit of ARPA money to make some improvements there and have some other improvements planned. So you all will be seeing in the near future a different look as you drive down Randolph, where the water filtration plant is located. I think you all know that one of the things that we did this last year with our ARPA money was to repair and paint all of our water tanks that will continue to be in use once the Brookmont project is completed. And according to our recently retired town engineer, he had not seen those tanks painted or repaired in the 34 years that he was in place. So, well, we have a lot of catch-up to do on our infrastructure generally, whether that's water, sewer, our buildings. And it's come home to roost, and we've been fortunate to have the ARPA money in order to deal with some of that. But on the other hand, it's not going to keep coming to us this way. So we need to be prepared if we want to have a good town in the future with good infrastructure that we're going to be seeing significant larger capital budgets in the future.
I think, I think unfortunately, in years past, there was a, a heavy transfer of administrative funding out of the water and sewer funds. That was technically allowed, but I believe put a deficit in the, in the funds in those areas for improvements.
Same thing was true of your VDOT money. When I got here, I found that a significant amount of your VDOT funds was being used to do administrative activities, and that limited what we could do with our VDOT funding, which is never enough, you know, none of these are, never enough to do everything that you want to do. But I think we are, we've made this kind of self-corrections that are needed. We've just got to keep digging a little bit harder and.
Okay, does the council have any other questions? Well, then I will open the public hearing for FY 2023, 2024 Water Fund. And I will close the public hearing. Next up is FY 2023, 2024 Water Fund Capital Improvement. Have the staff report on that. You're getting to talk a lot tonight, I know.
Let me just explain to the council, because I did revise your agenda. We ran one huge ad that included all of these activities. But in order to make sure that we meet the letter of the law as it relates to public hearings on various aspects of your budget, I felt it necessary for us to individualize each of these because in the case of the order you have to approve or have a hearing on the rates before you can talk about the budget, and then you can't talk about the capital until you've done the budget. So it's repetitive, and I apologize for that. But each of these is essential to your adoption of the various budgets at your next meeting.
So does the council have questions about the things that we've questioned before? Okay, if not, I'll open a public hearing for 2023, 2024 Water Fund Capital Improvement.
Just Mr. Reese's question about the replacement of the meters within that fund, and the largest amount in this next year's budget is for those meters.
And I will close the public hearing. Next is FY 23, 2024 Sewer Rates. So we'll just, if there's no questions, I'll open the public hearing. And I'll close the public hearing. I get to hammer a lot tonight.
Doesn't it, you're getting louder?
All right, next is 2023, 2024 Sewer Fund. That's basically the.
Sewer Rates.
No, I just did sewer.
Oh, you did, sorry. Not paying attention.
I will open the public hearing for that. And close it. All right, next is.
You will note that we do not have any funds requested in the FY 23, 24 Capital Budget for Sewer. So that's why that was not.
And next is FY 2023, 2024 Solid Waste Fund. Do you want to do one on this one?
I would just mention that this is a new fund, a new activity that started with the 1st of January with our entering into the contract with GFL. So you'll see that the ad showed no funds appropriated for FY 22, 23. But that is your last item on the list here tonight, and you will see that we've broken down the activity into various categories that includes not just the, the collection, but then the convenience center, which is a part of this budget as well. And we have not recommended any change in the rate. It's still the same $20 a month that the council adopted originally, and we intend for that to go forward into the next fiscal year.
It'll be two straight years without a rate increase on trash.
The county is increasing their rate, or I shouldn't say that. The PSA has recommended, they still have a public hearing later, I think.
Okay, any questions for that? Okay, I'll open the public hearing for FY 2023, 2024 Solid Waste Fund.
Jerry Sternberg, 526 North Washington Avenue, Pulaski, Virginia. I just have a question or a curiosity. So, thank you for helping the Main Street merchants representing the Fine Arts Center tonight, for example, on trying to figure out how to handle our solid waste. And we had gone back and forth about, we used to have a dumpster that PSA, you know, had it behind the south side of Main Street for companies that, to, could, to use, and we were being billed at a, basically a can rate, you know, bag and can rate from PSA. And so when we moved away from PSA, it was kind of a quandary as to how the merchants were going to handle their solid waste. So for a while, you had provided the dumpsters, you know, on both Jefferson Avenue end and the Washington Avenue end of Main Street. And I want to say I appreciate getting the letter we got at the Fine Arts Center the other day that basically you're going to leave those dumpsters in place for us to use, basically like we used to have before with the dumpster offering at the, at the bag-can rate. So appreciate that very much for a small outfit like the Fine Arts Center, who generates very little waste. But I am kind of curious, so we're going to be getting a bill with our water bill for a can. What are the businesses on Main Street, like restaurants or maybe some others that generate a fair bit of waste, how do they get charged for their waste? And I'm just curious, I don't really have a great need to know, just been wondering if there's like a rate difference between smaller outfits and bigger ones? That's all I was curious about, thank you.
Well, at the present time, there are no activities on either side of West Main that generate efficient amounts. And, but we did determine, in the process of trying to help Pulaski-on-Maine, who originally offered to try to resolve this issue, we found out that there were several, and that's more than three, property owners on that street that were paying nobody anything. And they have been notified now because they do have water bills.
Right.
That they will receive the same assessment of $20. And that $20 from all of the property owners on that block will be sufficient to pay the cost of those rentals. The town absorbed those costs.
Right.
During the construction of West Main.
Right.
Because we knew that that was a problem.
Right.
When the restaurants come online, which we hope will be soon, we anticipate that they're going to have to make different arrangements. So the larger businesses that have more to be collected will have to make other kinds of arrangements. And I know that there's an interest on the part of Pulaski-on-Maine actually having a third dumpster that could be a part of the service. But, well, right now, we're just trying to deal with those who are currently on the street, and it's predicated today on what kind of a water bill you have. Some water bills go to multiple apartments individually, and some are a single meter because of the low number of apartments. But as an example, 50, I think it's 53, 53, 67, and 69 will have a total of six apartments, and they have had a much, much larger meter installed, so they'll pay differently.
Okay. Well, from the Fine Arts Center, we, we spent some time saying, what, what are we doing about our trash? And, you know, it was a little bit up in the air. So now that it's been resolved with these dumpsters and us being paid or billing at that monthly rate, thank you, kudos, appreciate it, way to go. We're just going to have to get a can we can wander down the alley to take our trash out. But so far, it's working great, thank you, appreciate your help on that.
Anyone else? If not, I will close the public hearing. And next we have appropriating Solid Waste Fund for FY 2023, 2024, Resolution 2013-17. Staff report, please.
I think I've already explained the need for us to appropriate the current six months of this fiscal year, and then you have previously.
I think we need to appropriate, I think we need to appropriate 2022-23 first, right? If we're doing only the six months of this year, it should be 22, 23, right?
I think you're right, now that I've looked at it again. Told you this had been the most difficult.
And that, and that resolution probably should read 2023-17, not 2013-17. But I made that mistake today when I was writing something, so. So do we need to have a public hearing on it first, or just have a resolution?
You need to have a public hearing.
Okay.
Because.
Oh, because we're appropriating a certain amount, gotcha.
It's, it's 2023-17, I'm trying. It's the resolution.
Chair.
It's just on here on.
I think, so what they're saying is on the agenda on E, it's saying Resolution 2013-17, but the actual resolution in the pack, it has.
It's 2020, yeah.
Yeah, but actually, there should be two resol, two public hearings.
So one for 22, 23, and one for 23, 24?
Okay.
So.
So for Resolution 2023-17, which is listed at the end of I, that is.
That's our current fiscal year.
Yes, so you're appropriating $417,000, and then you see that it is being anticipated to be expended in the following categories, residential collections, town dumpsters, and the convenience center. And then on, you should have a public hearing on the budget for 23, 24.
So do we need to modify our agenda to cover that?
We'll modify the agenda, but we have advertised them all correctly.
Okay, so.
So we're going from that $417,000 that we're requesting to appropriate to next year's budget is anticipated to be $834,000 because it's a full year as opposed to the half year that we are currently asking you to approve. But following the format of what you've done previously, I would say you would hold a public hearing on the proposed operating budget for 23, 24 for solid waste. And then your last item would be the public hearing on the item for Resolution 2023-17. Have I thoroughly confused everyone?
No.
No, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Just to keep us doing all of the 23, 24 together. And then this is kind of an anomaly that we have to go back and approve the current year.
Okay. Do we have any questions on either one of those first?
I just have one question, are we spending money like we were expecting to spend money, or are we?
We're spending, and we can talk about this more after the budget, we're spending more on the convenience center than had been anticipated because we have not seen any drop off. In fact, we've seen more of an increase of.
That's what, when you make it things convenient, I guess we.
And I would just say, you know, candidly, we've had some trouble in the billing, but we have, in working with GFL, we've resolved that now. We're paying for what we should actually be paying for. But there were several months that we were going back and forth looking at billings because unfortunately, we have boundary lines that are confusing to just about everybody except for people who have to worry about those boundary lines all the time, which is your government. So that we had some people who were in the county that were being collected that should have been collected by PSA. We have some weird addresses where there's a house at the end of a street that's still in the town or it's in the county, and that all of those had to be, you know, corrected. But we've worked through that and have now made payment for January, February, and March? And April now, so we're really.
Right.
Bigger surprise has been what's happening with the convenience center.
Okay, thank you.
Are you comfortable in saying that we've navigated most of the issues and they're behind us?
The GFL?
Yeah. Okay.
And I think with the exception of what we started to discuss and didn't get, but so far at your last meeting as to whether or not you want to, I guess, approve, you know, the requirement that I had suggested we put in place in order to properly monitor that. And then I think I explained to you along with an apology that we found that, or I found out very recently that we had instituted that, we've really gotten no complaints. I don't know if you all have, but it seems to be working. But still a lot of trash that's coming in, so. But I would also say to you, and I have to say this to myself every time I worry about the budget for that function, this town is cleaner than it has been in a long time. If you ride our streets, you do not see the trash out that we had in the past, and you do not see a lot of bulk items out.
I would agree.
We are responding when those are out. I get the code enforcement people on right away. And we're getting better response from citizens when we call and say. But we're also with Olivia's help, reporting in advance to people, this is the bulk week for those of you, you know, that need to be reminded. So we're putting out lots of reminders to.
And I, and I will say, people of my neighborhood remind me. I go out, it's like, oh, it's the bulk week, that's why there's stuff. People are paying attention, so I think.
Every day it's improving, but the majority of the issues we had.
I, I thought so, that was my observation, I just. We get billed the, the bulk, on the bulk pickup, at the same rates as we do the rates at the convenience center, correct? What they pick up on those bulk truck pickup deliveries?
There is a monthly charge for the bulk collection for residents. That's different than what happens at the convenience center because of the.
So the, so the more people make use of the bulk pickup instead of taking it to the convenience center, it saves their taxes.
If that's what's happening, I can't say that people are choosing that route to make it easier or harder. We're just getting, well, I think I said something in an email last week. I mean, we're getting U-Haulers coming with, just filled with things, and. getting U-Haulers coming with, just filled with things, and trailers attached to large trucks bringing in things, and large trucks banging in, and it's not what we anticipated. And I don't think that was happening that often, or at least we didn't have, we didn't see it when it was on Dora Highway. And that's why we feel the need to make sure that we are providing the service to our residents and not to others. And we were providing, you know, we were requiring some form of ID previously, but we lost the opportunity to use decals when we made what I think was a good decision. I'm not faulting the decision all, but the fact that we could no longer use the decal on a vehicle as the means to identify, you know, resident versus non-resident.
I think what he was saying is if they would do the pickup, the bulk pickups, it would save us because we're not, that's included in the rates, so. And let's hope that the U-Haulers are, people are cleaning up to make the town look better in the long run. You know what I'm saying? Like, once they get rid of.
That's why, that's why we would like to see something that says it's.
Yeah.
Something that's in the town. We don't mind at all.
If it is, yeah.
If it is part of the property of residents of the town, because we want that service. And you all had said from the very beginning, when we started talking about trash, that you did not want to see this piles of stuff on our streets, and it wasn't being picked up on a regular basis. But this once a month seems to be working. Sometimes people put out more than three items, and we have to, they have to leave some, and then we try to go back and explain that to people. And occasionally, somebody will put out something that is not appropriate. And for example, this week, they've been short-staffed, so they've advised us, you know, that they didn't finish Monday's collection of bulk. They did finish the trash, but they would pick up the balance of the bulk today, you know, as they picked up Tuesday, so. And, you know, they have the same issues with keeping staff that everybody else does.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Well, it's that time of year, too, so it, I would think it would taper off soon. I mean, everybody doing spring cleaning and stuff at the, at the drop side.
They did winter cleaning. So we'll see.
Well, maybe not.
Summer cleaning and fall cleaning.
Okay.
The other thing that you all need to remember, that your public works people are picking up regularly tree limbs, you know, and trimmings, so that's another service that is being done as we see it on the street or as someone calls it in, which is a more regular service than what they had previously. And that's keeping it off the streets, too. And we know once somebody puts a pile out and then a dog runs through it, or the wind takes it, you know, it moves very quickly into the street or on somebody else's yard. So all in all, I think we have a cleaner town than we had previously. I hope you all see that, too, as you drive.
I have, I've actually gotten people commenting to me that they see less sort of litter, I guess, because just from blowing, you know, blowing cans over, ripping bags open by animals that the, the, the large cans do sort of prohibit that.
Well, then I will open the public hearing for appropriating solid waste fund for FY twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four. And I will close the public hearing for that. Then we have resolution twenty-twenty-three dash seventeen. I'll go ahead and, we've discussed it, so I'll go ahead.
That's just to appropriate.
Just the six month, or the.
Six-month period of the initial start of the college activity under the town.
So we'll open that public hearing. And we will close that public hearing. That concludes me slamming this hammer a little bit. All right. Do we need to do?
We need to do.
A resolution that, we need someone to make a motion for that resolution, please.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash seventeen appropriating solid waste funds.
Second.
And can I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Clance?
Aye.
All right, moving right along, presentations. We've got outdoor facilities update, Nate Repass. Very bright today.
All right. So thank you for having me today. This is a small presentation with an update on some of the things that have been happening in our outdoor facilities. So I'm Nate Repass, outdoor facilities coordinator for the town here. We've done a lot in the outdoor parks recently, and so I'll kind of go through an overview and as well, some of our current projects we're working on and some things we're looking to in the future. So as part of our parks process, we're looking to incorporate a universal sign design across parks that will help people identify what parks are town parks, what the name of that facility is, and kind of unify some of those parks so that we have a coordinated signage. What you see up on the screen here is their latest rendering of that design as, has come from committee recommendations. It was based partially on reaction to the love work in town with the kind of wrought iron work along the top, incorporating wooden rail tie elements as part of the heritage of the parks and the town here, and then a natural color scheme to fit in with some of the parks. This one is designed around the Draper Mountain Trails, but these would be individualized per park, so the main design would be the same. And for example, Kiwanis Park could have playground equipment across the top in that design, where this one has bikes, cogs, and trees. Sixth Street could have rackets, basketballs, and play equipment there. Our Cool Springs facility could have footballs, that sort of thing, so that would be individualized per park, while the rest of the sign design would remain constant across the parks. So this is kind of the, the latest rendering, and at the end of my presentation, if you'd like to provide any feedback on that, or if you have any questions, let me know. We will probably go through several more variations of different sizes on what will work across the parks. Some of these may be larger than others, some of them may be smaller to fit in with the parks, but they should all be located near an entrance there.
Do we have a current list of, of where all we would like to include signage?
Yes, so as part of our master list of parks, currently, our facilities include the mountain bike park, Sixth Street, our First Street Park, which includes the skate park, we've got Heritage Park, Cool Springs, there is Kiwanis Park, also called Dora Park, right by the train station, Valley Park, and then Draper Mountain Trails may be included along with that in future as that gets incorporated as more of a facility under management, and then any other future parks that would be added to that.
We have set aside funds out of the ARPA budget to do the installation of these signs.
Would, you know, I, I love the, the thought of coordinating, you know, signage across the, the parks. Would you, in my mind, would you include venues as well as, as you're theming basically the town, where people drive through the roads and every, you know, you know, all these streets they go down, all of a sudden, they see a sign saying, oh, that's for me, that's, that's open to the public, and, and things like the, with the trains, you know, in front of the train station, you know, you know, on the main drag, or, or transportation museums, or, you know.
Be a good idea to maybe, and also have them be maybe just a little bit different, like a different color scheme, like the parks will be green and like attractions would be red or something like that.
But you're basically giving the town a, an image at this moment, and, you know, and it could be coordinated beyond the core of it, you know, I, I think it's where, it's where you're at, but, you know, is.
Are you thinking directional signs as well as signs actually?
Well, not so, I mean, I'm thinking, you know, I mean, especially these locations that are on, I mean, these are, we're basically billboardin' ourselves, right? You know, we're, you know, and we're taking all that traffic count and saying, what, did you, you know, yeah, you might have saw, you can look over and see there's a mountain bike park over there, but how many people are like, what is that? Is that, you know, is that open for me? Is that, you know, is that, and we may have, we have signage, you know, actually, if you pull in the parking lot, they might give you some more, you know, you get, you know, close enough to it, like my reading is, I gotta get, you know, right here, you know, and figure out what's going on there. But for those main drags where, if you're, if it's a tourist attraction, then, 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 and a, and a tourist destination, you're screaming to people on the road, right? Saying, what, you know, what, this is what this is for you, this is open.
And part of the idea behind this design is that it is both expandable, since you have kind of your main three parts, you have the sign, the design across the top, and then that wood framework. This could be reduced to be a window sign in somewhere like a museum, where you've got that main design and your design across the top. It can be scaled hopefully for the parks so that some of our smaller playgrounds, or Jackson Park, could have a smaller version of this for foot traffic to see, that this is the Jackson Park gazebo as opposed to the mountain bike park where folks are driving by at thirty-five miles an hour and need to see something kind of big to say, here is a park. So our idea is for this to be a scalable experience that can be deployed to all of the parks in some form, and then potentially scaled past that.
I think it's great, and I think we're, as much as, from an image standpoint, you know, we think about Route ninety-nine, Route eleven, Main Street, you know, anywhere that we've, you know, got the potential for people to, if somebody passes through the town and all of a sudden, they get a chance to cross two or three of these signs and, and start realizing, man, look at, look at these amenities, you know, and, and I know people can probably see them themselves, but there, it, it, there's a different connection, I feel like, you know, emotionally, when, you know, if we put this together the right way, that people, it'll start adding up in their mind that they, that they saw mul, that they saw multiple.
Yeah, we did some signs several years ago, right after I got here, that were much smaller, and we didn't really have the attractions to advertise, so it might be that we're at the time to go back and look at those locations and see if we could maybe change the signage and.
Here's one you would love, what about one that says, here's our convenience center?
I'd rather send them to the love side.
But, but, you know, but it is, it's, it's, you're showing off amenities, you know, obviously, I know parks, you know, not number one type, type, but you, you, as many, is that you can click in somebody's brain that they saw as many things as they could see, right? And, and realize that how many things that were there, offered, available, and, and get that message across somehow on a sign as best you can, you know, and I don't know how far you go into, you know, you know, open, you know, open to the pub.
Weeds.
Up, open to the public, or, or time, if there's times.
Jamie's not here, we're going to talk about weeds.
Or if it's times that it's available, or, you know, so, so again, you're, you're speaking to the people on the road.
And hopefully, this will be kind of a, a signage to indicate the officiality of a town park or facility, and then folks, when they get on site, will then see a rule sign like we have at the mountain bike park at the kiosk, at the skate park mounted to the equipment, and they can look at those individualized rules and hours, but this is really more of a, hey, I'm an official town facility type attention grab.
New River Trail extension. You know, I think that one, did you mention that one, if you did?
So the, the Dora Trail, it passes through several of our parks, and we do have some aging signage on that, that would be well served.
That would be a good, a good. Catch the highest traffic spots you could for.
Well, I think a lot of people that visit the town, and I've had people ask me questions on the extension, where it goes, so that may be good to know that, I think, sometimes people don't realize it goes to the actual New River Trail, so.
Maybe that's a train station slash New River Trail extension, or, anyway, I think it's awesome.
Great idea.
I appreciate that, I appreciate all the work.
Related to this is kind of our Draper Mountain Trails project, so the current status of the Draper Mountain Trails, we've got our nine miles of trail up there. We've had a lot of volunteer labor in the past year. We've had two organized events, a June fourth Trails Day and a Go Palasque County Day with over seventy-five man-hours of donated labor. We've also had several individual volunteers that are, that are a lot harder to pin down on their exact hours up there, but we do have some aging wood features, so we're currently working on securing grant funding for that property with the intent to survey and separate the trails from the greater property of the Draper Mountain Park. Currently, that parcel of land is around seven hundred and eighty-eight acres. That incorporates some of this canine training area, fire training area, and the recreational use trails. It is our hope to bring that in as a park and as a separate facility so that folks know when they see the sign, this is the park, and this is town functional land that they use for training, storage, that sort of thing, to kind of bring that in. So we're currently working on securing that funding and hope to bring in a consultant group to help provide a master plan for that in order to better develop those trails and kind of coordinate that with this signage initiative.
You may remember that probably a year, year and a half ago, you had a group come forward that were volunteers that wanted us to market Draper Mountain as an attraction because they are very enthusiastic about it, and my recommendation to you at that time, which was before we hired Nate, was to have someone come and really tell us the condition of what we had there, because if we were going to market something, we wanted it to be something that we were proud of, and that we didn't want people to come back and say later, well, you know, your part, your trails were in disrepair. I think Nate was actually one of the volunteers that was here that night when they made the presentation. That's not why we hired him, but he is aware of that, and that's where he's been able to pull in a number of these volunteers that he's.
And we've had the.
Talking about, and it is our long-term goal to put those trails in a condition that it can be marketed as an attraction, not just to those people who know about it already, but to bring other people into the community to take advantage of it.
Now, you would probably know, is, aren't the mountain, aren't the Draper Mountain Trails on an app or something?
Yes, so there are several mapping user-based apps. Trail Forks is one of the best because it is user-based and actually admin their trails presence on there, so it has the most updated trail status for all of the trails that are located up there. It's run through the outside family, Outside Magazine, their family of products. MTB Project is one that's run through REI that also has all of the trails up there, although a little bit of a delayed reaction there since they moderate their content more heavily from a centralized standpoint, so. All of our trails are online and do see a fair amount of use up there. Quantifying those numbers is fairly difficult since not everybody who decides to walk their dog has a GPS watch and tracks that. We don't really have sign-in sheets currently up there, and even with that, not everybody's going to sign in if they're just up there to walk for a little while or ride their bike in from another location.
Does that, does that include the, do those apps include like the bike park, for instance, or the, the mountain?
Yes, so Trail Forks does include the, the mountain bike park. It's included as a point of interest as opposed to individualized trails because of the size and construction of that. The skate park is also listed on that app, and several of those have different layers that can include hiking, cycling, cross-country skiing, a number of activities with specific amenities. So for example, on Trail Forks, Draper Mountain Trails actually has wooden features, jumps specifically listed out so that somebody can look at a trail, see an elevation profile of that trail, and see exact GPS locations of, there's a wooden jump here, there's a wooden skinny there, there's a wall ride here along the various trails.
Nice, thank you.
So along with that, the mountain bike park has been very popular. We've located a portable toilet there for this year to provide a better experience for folks since there's not sewer or water there, it's had to be a portage on so that folks can use the bathroom while they're there. Friends of Peak Creek has expanded their monarch butterfly garden at that location to almost double the size to provide another amenity for folks who are parking there. We've seen a variety of uses, including by RC cars and scooters there, so it was reported to me that somebody saw a full trailer of RC cars and parts, and somebody was doing flips off of the jumps, and that's a non-destructive use that we hadn't anticipated. So far, we've seen no issues with folks riding motorized vehicles on the trails there, but we have seen some issues with folks driving down to the creek or onto the property further than we would like outside of the parking area as they were accustomed to back when it was a defunct garden facility, so we're currently working on addressing some of those and developing that. Then, the First Street Park and Skate Park, so it has been very popular. I received this email earlier this month on May ninth that it has seen ten thousand views on Google Maps since its inclusion as a point of interest for the skate park, which shows just how popular it is. These are not individual users, they're individual views, so somebody may have looked at it to show their friend the hours, looked at it again to get a GPS location, that sort of thing, but that's a, quite a number of views for one location around here. We did place a portable toilet at this location as well, but unfortunately, it was vandalized for three weeks running with spray paint graffiti on the inside, and so we've had to remove that from the facility. with spray paint graffiti on the inside, and so we've had to remove that from the facility. The basketball court has been slightly less popular in our vision, but that is in part due to the fact that it has yet to be striped. That should be upcoming in the following month. That company is supposed to be coming in in the first of June and have that completed by the first of July due to some weather issues and the scheduling conflicts. Most sports surfaces are routinely scheduled to be resurfaced. So these companies are setting their contracts five and 10 years out with schools that are regularly getting resurfacing. So getting in on that as a new facility showed fairly difficult for us. We've also seen a couple of other issues at this facility. The basketball rules sign and one of the dedication plaques was stolen from the facility. But otherwise, no graffiti has shown up on any of the skate ramps like we had seen at the previous skate park. So it has been fairly well taken care of. There's some fairly usual garbage issues with folks leaving drink bottles around. We currently have two trash cans and a recycling container at that location. Sixth Street Park has a pickleball court that you've probably heard about or asked about. That is being refurbished out of the tennis courts by the same company that is striping the basketball courts. And so they're going to be coming in in the beginning of June and have that done by July first for the new pickleball courts there. And to one of our new facilities, so as requested, we looked into and are currently in the process of ordering a splash pad to be located at Cool Springs. This shows the general location for that facility, so this will be a water park feature located at Cool Springs in addition to renovations of the bathrooms there. This location was identified as close to bathrooms and as a way to multi-use this facility so that the fields will still be functional. The bathrooms will regain their functionality and the splash pad will be kind of right along the trail here. That design is an Aquatics Aqua Smart design that, this is a fairly generic rendering. All of the features are in-ground. It is a flow-through design, so as opposed to a pool that recirculates, this will actually be coming off of the water system, go through the pad at a reduced rate and then go out into the sewer system. This will allow us to run this as an unmanned park. This is based around an activation bollard that you can see the child in the middle at. That is set on a timer so we can choose hours for the park. A kid shows up, hits a button, a mechanical system begins operation that runs all of the jets on a ninety-second timer and then it cuts off if they don't activate it again. With that facility, it should limit some of that water use. We can set those hours and if nobody's using it, it's not running. Being no above-ground features outside of the central bollard, there's very little to be vandalized, damaged, or otherwise destroyed at that facility, whether that's by mowing or anything else. So this design was leader of the pack through some committee here. Currently, we're looking at a mid-August install for this, which will give us kind of two weeks of full run. And then depending on the weather, that'll allow us to kind of have reduced hours once school goes back into session for this year. It can then be winterized and then next year, the usual running season for these is about a hundred days, close to the same as a pool, so Memorial Day to Labor Day.
This is one that has, I've thought about much and it brings me to two questions. One, it brings me to the thought about our restrooms. So obviously this is tied to the thought of Cool Springs because of the restrooms there. What, what is the current functionality of those restrooms?
They've been in disuse for years.
Are they locked?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so they're, they're unused currently, couldn't use them if they wanted to, right? And, and then the, the rest.
They're antiquated, I mean.
They need repair, okay. Cool Springs. Okay, so same questions for the train station bathrooms. What, what's their current use of those?
The train station bathrooms are currently unlocked for events only at the moment.
Events at the train station or?
Events in the park or at the train station. So for example, the marketplace on Tuesdays sees those unlocked. There is a local school group that does a field day there on Wednesday afternoons that have been unlocking the bathrooms for. So we have those open for larger events in the parks currently.
And that's currently like a town staff member that's, knows that there's an event and they unlock it for, and then they're responsible for coming back and locking it after that event's over.
Yeah, that's the staff member right there.
That's you, that's you.
Me.
I was thinking it was, I didn't want to sound down. So I don't.
We've had significant vandalism.
Right, well, I understand, you know.
Those outdoor toilets in that area, which is why they have not been left open on a whole time.
Yeah, so I, and I, and I get that and I understand it, so I'm just trying to think, what is the, what is the solution past that? I guess, because, and I don't know what it is and don't know how expensive it is, but if, if they're locked other than for that purpose, especially the train station, then there's not much point in it being there. You know, for, for being that isolated, to me, it seems it becomes less functional and obviously you guys, like we're talking about, we're putting in porta, you know, potties at skate parks, which is not that far away from really the train station bathrooms and we're putting, when we have events in Jackson Park or things of that nature, you know, it's, it's a typical issue and we have those restrooms there, but they're not functional to us, you know, and I understand the vandalism side of it. I go to state parks that have unmanned, you know, bathrooms, more or less, you know, and I don't know if it's in the design of the equipment that's inside of it that makes it less, or less able to vandalize or easier to clean up after it is vandalized or.
The equipment that you have currently at the train station was purchased to be vandal-proof and there's no such thing.
Right, I'm sure.
If you try, you know, hard enough, it can vandalize it. When the skate park and basketball court were designed, we actually stubbed out and you'll see the stub in the center with the idea that we'd come back at some point and actually build a restroom facility there. And that still can be done. It has a cost to it and we'll have to decide at what point that may become necessary. But part of what is, has delayed the splash park from going forward up to this point is waiting to get some cost estimates for the restoration, repair, rehabilitation of those restrooms and what to purchase that makes it as vandal-proof as possible and to live within, you know, a reasonable budget. And I don't know that there is really a solution except to try to get the community to better understand and value its assets. And I think I said to you all when we first opened the skate park that I was very pleased that we did not see, and we still haven't until this restroom issue came up, any vandalism there. And I have been hopeful that as we develop additional facilities for people who have perhaps waited a long time for decent facilities, because there was a lot of graffiti and everything at the old skate park at McGill, that we would all as citizens take better care of what we have.
So would there be any advantage to having cameras of, at these facilities and as a deterrent? Because I don't, I don't think we're ever going to eliminate vandalism. I mean, unfortunately, I think that's just a fact.
I, I think we just have to build it in a budget to say, you know, that there's, these are, if anything that gets used needs to be replaced and we just need to expect that we're going to have to replace public facilities more frequently.
Yeah, but I do, I do, yeah, and I, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I, I think a deterrent might be useful just, you know, staying a camera in the vicinity might make someone think twice.
Just so you know that it was, you'd know who was coming in and out of those restrooms, you know, if something was an issue, it's, you know, could be.
And several responses to that. We do have porta potties currently at Heritage Park and the bike park that have been untouched by vandalism so far. So they've not seen the same issues as the skate park and so location may play some factor in that with the centrality of the train station and the skate park to downtown where a lot of people are walking around. Whereas those facilities that are further out on the trails like Cool Springs, like the mountain bike park, Heritage Park where they're further away. Along with this, bathrooms at this location also open up the possibility of doing more events at Cool Springs. Currently, as it stands, there are lights that haven't been used in years. There's a building with bathrooms that haven't been used in years, locker rooms that haven't been used in years, and that's kind of an under-utilized facility. So bringing the splash pad to the location not only brings a renewed attention to that location, but having the bathrooms potentially available in the off-season for, I know part of the problem with the train station bathrooms was in the winter, folks would hide from the weather in there. For these, if the bathrooms are open during the operating season of the splash pad, that limits you to a third of the year that they're actually open and the rest of the year can be used to maintain and repair them if they are damaged. Also with this splash pad, it is designed around operating hours, so we can set those early in the year. The bathrooms in the splash pad could only be open for, say, three hours, four hours during the hot part of the day in the afternoon, reducing the amount of time that people are able to vandalize those bathrooms.
I have seen portable cameras, to get back to that, in, in, I see it in Rhino quite often, you know, I'm not a fan, but I think if it's a, if there's a deterrent, it's a, it's an inexpensive way to deter those types of things. Another thing I will compliment our police department on, I've noticed their, the community policing activity and I think that's a big part of limiting some of this vandalism. I saw a lot of engagement over the weekend with folks, just
A lot of.
Police officers and I think that was, that was really good to see.
You know, the bicycle patrols will be out more frequently too.
So I, I commend our police department for, for, for being, being upfront and out there, meeting the people, so.
And from a train station restroom standpoint, I understand you, the concern of people making use of them at, at night or trying to stay warm and things of that nature. I still would imagine that you would, that you would lock those restrooms outside of hours that people would use the parks, you know, and we close our parks after dark, I think, is what most of them are signed with. And so I think you would still have hours that they would be locked. But it wouldn't be during normal use hours of the parks. And, and the last thing I'll say, and somebody might kill me for saying this, but in my opinion, this is a wonderful attraction that the even thought of having the possibility of being able to do this is, is something that, you know, I don't think anybody would have imagined. I think this is a great attraction, right? I think locating it in Cool Springs diminishes how much credit you get for it. And I, I think something like this belongs in Jackson Park. You know, somewhere where it's going to be as visible and as used and draw attention and draw traffic to, to the heart of the town as opposed to away from downtown. You know, when I, when I think of these splash pads that I've, you know, that I've seen and, and people make use of, they're, they're in, they're, they're always located in, in a dense, you know, or maybe dense isn't the right word, but, you know, a heavily trafficked area, not, not really pushed out to a side, right? And I agree, Cool Springs is underutilized, I think it, because of the restrooms and but, but to me, in a downtown area with attractions, those, those restrooms at, at the train station are close enough to everything. You know, if people know that there's operating hours for those restrooms and they can count on that they're going to be open and like Mr. East said, maybe we gotta do everything you can do to prevent vandalism. If you know, hey, I'm at the skate park, I know there's restrooms over here that are open all the time if I need them.
I think it's done sort of like we did with the playground equipment. Each one was different to draw people to different parks. So I think that's to draw them over there.
And I might say that the one benefit of having it at Cool Springs is that there's parking there. And, and there, there isn't, and, you know, on that part of town, there's not, and I mean, Cool Springs, there's Heritage Park not that far away. But, but I also think, you know, I mean, to, to bring that point up, you know, you could make the argument, put it up where, you know, where the McGill Park was, I mean, there's not a public access facility anywhere in that part of town. I mean, you, you could make the argument everywhere, you know, that, that, you know, you can, there's pros and cons of everything. And I think, you know, the pro is that it's got, it's a facility that's already there, we already own it and it's already got the, you know, the infrastructure to make it.
Yeah, I'm just afraid we, I'm just afraid we may hide it, you know, from, from the masses, you know.
No, I understand. It, it's a, it's a fair point.
Promote it, to go back to your earlier comment. But I would also say that we have deliberately with a lot of what we've done, including the different colors that we use for the playgrounds and the different equipment that some other playgrounds have. That was all a thought process to get people to move around our town, including the people that live here and that we don't just stay in our own quadrant. And I don't particularly like quadrants because I think they get labeled sometimes correctly, sometimes incorrectly, and it creates divisiveness in communities. And we don't need this in this beautiful town. So while we have Kiwanis Park, it has its uses, but it's not the same kind of draw that this splash park will have. But we're going to have to let people know it's there. But I have seen with the four playgrounds that we've done, people who are going to playgrounds not in their neighborhood because of what we've done, and that's what we hope will happen with this, the splash park. And I would, from the first time I came here, I thought, why do we have all of this and why is this restroom here and nobody's using it? I mean, and Nate mentioned, you know, there are some fantastic lighting that's there that evidently years ago was used as a football field and there's a scoreboard there that's not cheap.
I guess that's when it was Pulaski wreck, right? Is that right? I don't, I don't know.
I don't know.
Baseball field initially and then as a football field. It was a practice field for the middle school for a while. Then I believe Pee-wee leagues used it and it's kind of.
There was signage at the intersection with Route ninety-nine that pointed in that direction for a ball field that had been there for years and yet the field wasn't used. And so with the limited amount of land that we do have as a town, you know, it, to us seemed like an idea. But I understand exactly what you're saying and if we had, you know, more flat land, you know, to do something, we could, you know, I've looked at, in fact, I think I had Nate look at the idea of bringing in an ice skating rink that some communities have done.
Don't joke about that. My daughter might kill me if we don't do that.
But, you know, to bring in something on a temporary basis and maybe that could be at Jackson Park.
Some of this was also functionally based on where the water and sewer hookups were, where we had tanks that would supply the pressure for this and have the needed volume for this facility and have the amenities in a place that were easy to work on. This will be eight to 10 weeks for delivery and then almost a month for install because they'll have to be excavating, installing and kind of dodging weather along that, so it, it will take a little while there. So putting it in a park where we can work on things easily, where there's not a whole lot already packed in place, this location just kind of made sense.
If nothing else, if, you know, it definitely draws into the thought of the Cool Springs field in itself in a larger way of, you know, is there something else that needs to be considered at that location? If we're going to spend, you know, this much energy to draw folks to that field, do we need soccer goals there? You know, or, you know, you know, or.
Walking track.
Something, you know, what, what, you know, what else, you know, could.
We talked about a, a dog park there. We don't think that's a good location because of the possibility of runoff and that kind of thing. But as Nate will tell you, there's, our list is not finished. We don't think we have done everything that could be done, that needs to be done to enhance the attractiveness of the town. But this is what we've done so far and, and almost exclusively with ARPA money, which was a key to our ability to invest in these kind of things where the initial guidelines said get people out, you know, have them in the fresh air because of COVID, you know. We bring in attractions that help tourism. And if there are other ideas that you all have, we're happy to hear them and put them on the list. And I think it is a very, very underutilized area. And I think it is a very, very underutilized area. And we've got now, and I don't know what to do with it, but you've got the former site of the convenience center, that's our land. And we've got the very unattractive former sewage treatment plant that has a major expense to pull that building down. But that's land that's adjacent to the trails that perhaps has some future use if we can figure out what that might be and then make arrangements. And Nate has been good at identifying some possible grants and other resources.
That's where your fishers can park.
They can park there instead of going down to the mountain bike park.
And that may be a location along there. Also with the, the Dora Trail, which we are currently looking on some solutions. The Dora Trail does have some washout issues and a, a few stream bank erosion issues that make it slightly less attractive during parts of the year for folks coming in. But this will also provide yet another thing for people coming off of the New River Trail, riding into town who can pass new playground equipment, new splash pad, and other things that kind of want them to come deeper into town and see what's going on in town, hopefully. So town manager had also mentioned a dog park, so we are currently still looking for a location on that. Several sites have been identified, and we've kind of gone through pros and cons on those. Have not landed on a, a set location for that yet due to some of those issues.
And we need small and large dogs. We're not eliminating ourselves.
Yes, well, we'll try and incorporate all, all types of dogs, which is part of the finding a, a location that is both a suitable size and in a reasonable location around town for that. We also have a lot of events that have been happening in the parks this year. We've got various festivals, including Music and Merchants coming up, using public space this upcoming weekend. So there's a lot of things happening to the facilities in the parks, but there's also a lot of events happening in the parks with our Easter egg hunt put on by the Ruten Club earlier this year, a DSS Family Festival, Music and Merchants. In June, there will be a Family Fun Festival sponsored by Friends of Pete Creek in Heritage Park, celebrating kids along the creek. We've got a July event targeted by the Fine Arts Center, excuse me, an August event, early August, and then a September event, music event, being brought back by Pulaski on Main again. So we've got a number of festivals and other things that are coming up in the parks to make use of this infrastructure. And so that things like bathrooms at Cool Springs may make that a destination for festivals in future and provide these sort of events where people can go to different parks instead of just music in Jackson Park. It can be music in one park this weekend, music in another park on another weekend.
Nate, describe for them briefly some of the realignment that we've done at Heritage Park of the shelter. In order to have more use of the shelters, because I think you've had an increased request, number of requests for uses of those for picnics and other kinds of activities.
Yes, so Heritage Park, we've, we have the shelter there available for reservation. It is free to reserve currently for weekends. We've seen a number of birthday parties, various other celebrations there. So we went ahead and replaced the picnic tables at that location. Most of the picnic tables that were there were either an octagonal style or an aging wood that really didn't fit with the character of that shelter or be all that conducive to events that required an area there. So we replaced and redesigned that so that there are now six picnic tables in two rows lengthways along the facility that are bolted in place and one picnic table at the end that is mobile so that folks can have a buffet area and then seating for people with additional room for tables there because of some of that increased use that we've seen there.
But that use will go up after a splash pad's closed.
I'm sure it will. And so that covers most of the parks. If there are any questions, I can go and answer those.
So I would just say, we've been doing a lot, and we've been fortunate to be able to hire Nate to oversee that. I would tell you, as going back to the budget presentation that I failed to mention, but we have tried to use our money from ARPA on non-recurring kinds of activities so that we didn't become dependent on that. In the first year of the use of the money, we hired several new positions using ARPA funds. And this budget that we are recommending to you transitions those several positions into the regular general fund budget so that we're not going to be relying on the ARPA funds to continue that. And one of those positions is the position that, that Nate holds. And we think that that outdoor facilities coordinator position is very valuable now and will be even more valuable in the future for the well-being of the town. And as we try to think of more things, and we'd love for you all to give us other ideas. It'll be like everything else, they won't all fit in a budget. But if we have some thoughts about things for the future, as I started to say, Nate's been very good at identifying some grant opportunities. Not all of them have been successful thus far, but you, you know, you write half a dozen grants and you may get one approved. But if you don't write any, you won't get any money approved. And, and so if you come up with some ideas in addition to what's been discussed tonight, please let us know.
I have one idea. The, I, I, I sit on the regional commission, so I got an email about the Visit NRV, which is the new tourism. And one of the things they have in there is like trails, is like, what do you do with a day or a weekend or, you know, in an area? And they, they also have them themed, like outdoors or, you know, food and culture and that kind of stuff. And it makes me wonder if maybe we could provide them with some photos and pictures of a day in Pulaski. Because they have the county, and I think it includes some elements of the, of the, of, of our, you know, facilities. But maybe, you know, something like that, like, you know, a day for kids or a day for grownups or day, you know, that maybe, you know, and, and like a trail through town where they could see, you know, all the various amenities we had. And just sort of to highlight the, 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 the opportunities that people have. And, you know, maybe that would be a way to, because I know, I don't know who told me this, but somebody told me that, you know, people from Roanoke were coming to the mountain bike park. People from Richmond were coming for the mountain bike park. And so maybe, you know, if you're, that's for the grownups, what about the kids? Well, they can go to the skate park, they go to the splash pad, or they, you know, and that way it becomes a whole, they make it not just one person, but a whole, you know, whole family or, or larger group of people comes into town and they, you know, spend more time, spend more money.
I've been in communication with the tourism department.
Okay, great.
To get us involved in that, and there will be, as part of the new Visit NRV system, they've got the, the footprint stickers, and they are placing those in several parks around town as they find out where it's at and let us know.
Great.
Part of that event, so we are involved in part of that rollout.
And there's a new map that they've developed that we have a number of our new activities or facilities listed in.
Okay, great.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say, the bike parks are great, but I do have a question. So as I was driving in, I noticed the grass is kind of tall, and I had asked Ms. Burcham about this, and she said, ask Nate.
You give him the same answer you gave me.
So, so she said you have an answer.
The grass is being mowed this week currently, so it is kind of at the end of its growth cycle right now for being mown. That facility, because it is designed around trails, much of the grass that is surrounding the trails is part of an erosion control system. And so that grass is not mowed on the same schedule as the other parks where Jackson Park sees a lot of foot traffic and needs that grass to be really low so that people can play soccer and play around in it. A lot of the grass in between those jumps is helped to design, is designed to help prevent that silt from the jumps from leaving. And so it is left a little bit higher, and so Public Works goes out there kind of on an every other mowing schedule for most of that. It is their intention to mow around the garden and in some of those high foot traffic areas more so that those are trimmed tighter, but.
Right around the actual, you know, the, the.
Features?
Features, thank you.
Yes.
Right around the features, then, it's, it's intentional.
Yes, and so the, the trail itself will have a buffer that is cleared back so that you're not hitting weeds with your bike as you go through. But you still have some of that larger growth or in between those jumps and some of those areas where you may experience runoff so that it better catches that. And also partially discourages foot traffic because you want people to ride that trail and come back instead of riding one or two features and then hopping off and tromping through the grass and then riding again. A lot of it's designed around loops, so people will stay on the trail and come back. Those areas really aren't designed or intended for foot traffic as much as some of the other parks.
He gave you a much longer.
Nate's answer was much more thorough than yours. Thank you, that helps.
I would also just say that very recently, because of the ongoing maintenance that is going to be needed with all these new facilities, I've started having Nate attend a weekly, one of the daily meetings on a weekly basis with the public work staff so they can stay very close in touch with what is needed. Nate does a lot of work himself on some of the equipment. He carries around just about every tool, I think, in the back of his car. And I've told him, we'll buy you some tools, you know, if you really are missing something because he works on that. But he is interacting a lot with public work so that we can make sure that what we have put in place is well-maintained and we can be proud of it and not see it go into disrepair the way things may have in the past.
All right, thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we'll go to, if someone would like to make a motion for Resolution 2023-18, appropriating funds from debt set off.
Can I ask us one question? When it says vehicle delinquent debt set off, is that just delinquent personal property tax? Okay, I just was, I was wondering if we had not paid our debts for our vehicles. The way it was written.
Well, let me just say here that Jackie and her staff have done a marvelous job in going after delinquent accounts, whether it be real estate, personal property. And we have started using tools that are out there but require additional work in order to accomplish getting the rightful monies that are owed to the town. It hasn't always made people happy, to say the least, because we are now able to capture and have held hostage any tax refund until the debt that is owed to the town is paid, and that includes utilities, right, as well? And so this is not something that we have seen a lot of revenue from in the past. But in order, you know, to not only receive it, but then potentially make it available, and we have suggested in this resolution that the money go to a contingency, which means it'll, you know, it'll fall to fund balance if not spent. But they really are to be congratulated for the kind of effort that's gone in to this, and it's not simple. You don't just tell DMV or the state, you know, somebody owes something. There are lots of paperwork involved, and we haven't made people happy.
Wait, so, so delinquent debt set off, when I hear set off, I think write off. So this is money that we've actually collected that was owed previously? That's fantastic.
How long is this, how long have you actively been working this program? Is this the?
This is the first year.
First year, okay. Okay.
And that's just a portion. Because it's a process once you get a hit on a tax refund. Correct me if I'm wrong, once we get notified by the state, we have to certify through different steps.
Sure.
So there will be more to follow from what you're seeing from state. I mean, we've had a lot of success, a lot of work, a lot of grief.
And the way you were actually able to approve.
Oh, the decals, that was because of this.
The decals was because we had recovered enough in the real estate and personal property delinquency just in the normal fashion, not through debt set off, that we were able to have an equal amount of money in this year's budget so that we could wait until the fall to receive that license fee, which is now called, as opposed to the decal fee. So there's been a significant effort on the part of the finance department to not only collect what comes in on a daily basis, but to really get people to pay. And that's the only fair thing to do, you know, because if people are paying on time, we should have those who are not. And then we do have in process right now a significant number of properties that Sam Zander, Sandam.
Sands Anderson?
Yes, can't even say. Is processing for us for a delinquent tax sale of real estate property. That'll be probably later in the summer, I would guess. So we're really.
So this is close to 100,000 then, in, in a year? Is that, am I reading this correctly?
For all of the accounts?
For all the accounts.
And Jackie said, we should get another slug before the end of the fiscal year. First payment?
So how much of the delinquent debt is this a portion of roughly? 5%, 25%, 50%? Yeah. I mean, I know you, you don't have the amount of numbers, but.
You can make it up, we won't know.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's still a lot of progress. 5% is not nothing, especially if it's 100.
Big number.
Yeah. Okay. Right.
We're also going after liens that have been put on properties.
Okay, excellent.
Where we've become the lawn service.
Right.
For folks. Now, we do get paid that when a property is sold.
Right.
If the attorney has looked at what's on it. We found some places where that wasn't, that have created some problems for us too. But there's just been a real, and with no additional staff.
Yeah.
They're just redirecting their energies, and we've been very blessed to have some good staff down there.
Well, I think we need to commend the finance department, all of you. Jackie, I really do. I thank you all. You're very unappreciated a lot of the time, so.
Don't go down there tomorrow. That's cut off day, so you know what it's like.
But I really think that all of you should go and, and see what they do down there, because they really do, they work, they work tirelessly, and I appreciate you.
And are always very, very nice.
Yes.
At least to me. Maybe that's just me. But that was even before I was like counsel, so I can't screw up.
I will say that wasn't always the case. I mean, in recent years, absolutely, but.
I've watched them be very polite.
It was a different.
I've watched them be very polite to some people that probably shouldn't be very polite to, but they know how to.
You guys get to see the worst of everybody, right? Cutting, cutting the water off is not a pleasant experience for anyone. Or that. Yeah, that's, that's probably a bigger one than the water.
Oh, something needs to make a motion to do this.
Ms. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-18, appropriating funds from the debt set off.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to the public comment period. Y'all have stuck around, so I'm going to let you speak. First up, I have, is Janet Brennan? If you could come up and you just, just say your name and your address and then.
My name is Jan Brennan, and I live on Third Street Northwest. So I have it written down so I don't shake too bad. Good evening, Mayor Collins, Town Council members, Ms. Burcham, and town staff. I know that the town of Pulaski has been through a number of changes with various opinions of the day-to-day functioning and operations of our town. I wanted to come before you this evening to express my thoughts and appreciation for the town of Pulaski staff relating to a recent incident at my home. I've been a resident in the town of Pulaski since my husband and I purchased a home here in the town in 2002. This is a home that had been deemed worthy of preservation by the town of Pulaski in the 1980s. My home was built in 1894 in one of the town's first established neighborhoods. When originally purchased, it was our hope to restore the home and preserve its historic character as well as the land that surrounds it. Regrettably, an incident that occurred about two weeks ago shook the core of my very being and diminished my hopes that I could continue my efforts to maintain what my husband, I should say, my deceased husband, started in 2002. Early one morning a couple of weeks ago, I discovered. Early one morning a couple of weeks ago, I discovered after the most recent windstorm that one of the older trees on the easement borderline of my property had been uprooted, lay across the alleyway, and blocked access through the alleyway. My first thought was that I needed to be a responsible citizen and arrange for the removal of the tree myself. I then followed up to make a call to Kim Cordell with the town of Puyallaski to inform her of what I was going to do to have the downed tree removed and my efforts to clean the property. She was kind, compassionate, and most of all, understanding of what I perceived to be facing. That same morning, she sent a crew to assess the situation, subsequently contacted me to inform me that the crew would remove the tree and take care of the debris. Ms. Cordell shared that I would not incur any cost for the removal of that tree. I was overwhelmed with gratitude for her attentiveness to the emergency situation, and I want to express my sincerest appreciation this evening for her support. In addition, the crew, led by Chris Phillips, assessed the situation, removed all of the debris, and advised me of the additional safety issue with the instability of the roots of the tree beside the tree that fell into the alleyway. They, with care and concern for our neighborhood's safety, removed this tree as well. They graded the area, and this evening, I noticed that grass is now coming up where they fixed that area. Now, it is no longer damaged by the tree that fell down. It is with great appreciation that I have this opportunity tonight to stand before you and say to all of those who are present here this evening how deeply grateful I am to the town of Puyallaski leadership, the staff, and community partners for their efforts to make our town a safer place for sustained quality of life. I thank you for the opportunity for me to share my experience. I'll share this last thing. My husband was four thousand miles away, and he found this home from London, England. We purchased the home because those are the properties that he worked on in England. We're talking five, six hundred-year-old properties, not a hundred twenty-plus. And he bought the house, we bought the house purposely to keep it intact. And the staff eased my mind with me being on my own, and this property has now been maintained. We've worked on it for twenty-plus years, and I'm grateful. And I think it was important to come before all of you to let you know there are persons in this town who are grateful for what is happening and grateful for the support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying two hours to be here. Not a lot of people would do that, so I most appreciate it.
You know, babies gotta do what babies gotta do.
Thank you so much. It's good to hear positive, too. Next, I have Teri Sternberg.
So, Teri Sternberg, 526 North Washington Avenue. Thank you for letting me speak for a minute, Mr. Mayor and Town Council members, Ms. Bircham. By the way, I had a very similar experience with a hemlock tree in front of my house that was on Town Park property, because I live at the Sixth Street Park. And a big part of the tree fell on my house. The town came, took that off my house, cut down the tree a little bit later, made everything safe and good. So I've had a very similar experience, and always very appreciative. In fact, they even tried to file a claim for the town for my gutter repair, but it didn't get approved. But they made the effort, so kudos, kudos. I just mainly want to say thank you so much for letting Together We Rise rise on the Jackson Park land. I'm sorry that the placement caused a little bit of concern by it being kind of close, but almost anybody who wants to know whether anything will fall on a car parked, just go and try to move a ladder, and you will find that there is nothing going to move on that statue and that sculpture, rather. So huge thanks. We got way more ladders than we ever, ever expected, which tells me a little bit about the character of the people in the county and the town who just started rolling up with ladders when I thought we were gonna have to just knock on a lot of doors and plead for lent ladders. We have over two hundred ladders in that sculpture, twenty-nine of which are eighth-grade middle school arts pieces that are really sweet and cute as can be. So huge thanks to all y'all for being supportive of it. I've heard, you know, a few people were like, eh, I don't like it or whatever. But for the most part, a lot of folks have said, this is so cool, this is so wonderful. And your comments that you made at the ceremony when we had that ceremonial ribbon cutting were so wonderful about the sense of rising up together, the uplift that we want to give our citizens and belonging to one another. So huge thanks for them. The Fine Arts Center, for me personally, ever since I heard about it, it's been a project that's resonated deeply with me as one who really loves my home here and the people who live in it. So that's the main thing. One thing I did learn about pickleball is that tennis courts, and I guess pickleball courts are supposed to face north and south because of the sun. So I just want to give you a little feedback that pickleball players could be expecting the orientation of those courts to be north and south, like the tennis court? Just FYI, okay? I didn't know that. But, and the only other thing I'd like to say is, I know it's a small park, the Sixth Street Park on the northeast corner. I was wondering if it could maybe be a small dog park, small park for dogs of whatever sizes. But anyway, just a thought. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. I have no other speaker slips, so we will move to the consent agenda. If someone would like to make a motion to accept those.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda for May 2nd, 2023.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Moving on, we'll move to the council comments. We'll start with Mr. East.
Ms. Bircham, I have one. I noticed the fountain in the park, is there a way we could get that? Is there a way we can get that on a cleaning schedule?
One in Jackson Park?
Jackson Park, yeah.
I thought it was online.
Okay, thank you.
I know they were over there a while back replacing.
Yeah, I was, they, yeah, I don't know, I was over there over the weekend.
Be happy to pass that on, thank you.
Mr. Clark?
I have nothing.
Mr. Dawson?
The only thing I'll have this evening is I did get a chance finally to make it down to the farmer's market. The vendors were great, and they were all very friendly, you know, all, you know, had great, you know, business, a lot of local folks, but there were some folks that were coming out of, you know, coming out of Whiffle, I think, too, and some other places. But I thought everything that I saw, the music was good. One thing I'd ask is if there's anything that we could do to benefit, and me and Nate were talking, got a chance to talk about it down there, the promotion and advertisement of that, to make sure that we're hitting all the channels that we can hit to try and promote that event, just to make sure that the word is out there at the highest level. Maybe it is already. You know, like, me and Nate were talking about, when the chamber first started that event, you know, it was pushed heavily by the chamber, right? You know, the thing the chamber did, and so the chamber pushed it, you know, just heavy, strong, you know, everything that they put out was about that, right? And so because of that, you saw a ton of chamber-related folks at that event, right? You know, so that was the group of folks that were hearing it and seeing it, and so they were there. And so I think if, just wanted to make sure we're not missing anything. It's a great event, it's a great venue, and great folks down there to benefit the vendors themselves. And anything that we could do to make sure we're pushing that out there and everyone that has an avenue for us too, I think would be wonderful, so that's all I have.
Mr. Clontz?
Nothing seen.
Mr. Reese?
I just wanted to follow up on that comment about how attentive and lovely the public works guys are. They have, every time I've had to call them, they're nothing but nice and prompt and got the job done. And it's not an easy job, it's not always a job you get to do when the weather's nice or you're not tired or it's not freezing cold, so it's much appreciated. I just, you know, I'd like to share that. And also had a thought. When? This is sort of apropos of nothing, but it occurred to me that, you know, we... How do I say this briefly without going crazy? We were talking about code enforcement previously, and I don't remember why we were talking about it, but this evening. And I was thinking, you know, there are times when, you know, we have had problems with individual landowners not following up when they've had code enforcement issues. And I'm wondering, what are the, what if any, and maybe you don't know offhand, are there other mechanisms of like things we could do to sort of, you know, just like, I'm thinking about the debt set off. Are there mechanisms that, you know, are there levers that we could use to encourage landowners to, you know, comply? Well, but I was thinking things that we could do internally, you know? If you want to have a zoning variance and you're at a compliance in a different place, maybe you don't get, you don't even get to apply or something. I'm just trying to think creatively, and maybe it's something that doesn't cost a lot of money.
In some communities, you cannot file for a rezoning if you owe any monies to the local jurisdiction, whether that's real estate or liens or what have you. We can certainly kind of see what others may be doing, you know, to try to encourage that. But off the top of my head, you know.
Understand, I just, it was just a thought.
Even resorting to going to court, you know, is a challenge because of how long it takes to get something heard. But we have resorted to that, and as Spencer knows, you know, we've been back on some people multiple times and then finally gotten compliance, but it's not easy. And I really think we ought to perhaps, from the next general assembly, talk about having someone look at if there could be some other tools or mechanisms, particularly when we become the landlord for, an absentee landlord, because we're constantly either mowing the grass or boarding up windows or what have you. And I, in fact, mentioned this to a couple of the state organizations that lobby for local governments, that they ought to see if there's not a way to have a mechanism after so many years of non-compliance, being able to step in and take that property or do something that really has to it. But Virginia has very, very strong private property rights that are difficult to maneuver, that's for sure.
Thank you. So I have two things. I had three, but someone else brought it up about the grass out there on the trails. I've had people come by and ask me about it, so I was gonna ask. I've had people come by and ask, and I know this is touchy, but reduced trash, they say that GFL offers it. Can we check to them and see if they will, if they will offer it, if we can offer that too? I don't know if it's one of those things we can, but in other communities, like in Carroll and With, I think, or at least Carroll County, if they do offer it. I know that there's some people that don't have hardly any trash, and it, older people may, it may be harder for them, you know? The other thing is just a reminder that there is the Music and Merchants coming this weekend. I'm trying to wear the shirt, represent. It's from three to nine on Main Street. So please come out and, you know, buy stuff, support our local people, you know, and enjoy some music because it's pretty cool. It's a pretty cool thing that they do, and there's a lot of good live music. I've went to the past ones, so that is all that I have right now that I think of. So with that, we'll move to the manager's report.
Just building on, because several of you have taken away what I was going to say about Music and Merchants as well. Our new economic development staff person, Mike Haskins, has developed a special event for that same afternoon, which we hope will also draw people down to the Music and Merchants. And we're going to have, I think he said, fifteen individuals who have already signed up to do a truck pull. But the trick is, the truck is a fire truck. And so that should be an interesting event, very unusual, and something that he has evidently participated in a similar kind of event, not with a fire truck, but with other pieces of equipment. And we're hoping that's another way to bring people into our town for the first time to see the attractions that we do have. Want to just remind you all, too, that we do have a billboard on Route 99 that we can, at least twice a year, have something promoting the town. In the past, we shared that and let the Radcliffe Museum use it one time, and the town did it another. Nate actually prepared, and then the company Lamar actually did the graphics for us, but we tried to promote the outdoors, and that's another opportunity for us to do some promotion. And, Mr. Mayor, we looked at the offer of a, it wasn't an offer, they suggested a billboard, but that particular billboard was closer to the other community and really not close enough for us to take advantage of that. But that may be something in the future we would look at, outdoor billboards on the interstate to direct people. And certainly are securing the designation on the interstate of the historic commercial downtown was another way that we were hoping to draw people in to see us for the first time. Want to just mention that you all, as a body, have been very generous with your time and agreed to a joint public hearing that we'll be having at five o'clock on Friday afternoon here in these chambers with the planning commission to hopefully correct a zoning matter on Washington Avenue that really is something that should have been caught a long time ago. But your willingness and that of the planning commission to come together, do that, will allow a new business to open that otherwise would have a significant delay in our processing of their application for rezoning. And it really is something that needs to be addressed, not just for that one property, but for several properties on that same street. And then I want to read something that will be posted immediately after this meeting. I believe at your last meeting, several of you mentioned our two-way traffic, that it seemed to be working well, and that there was a thought that perhaps at the, what some people call the Y intersection or the V intersection, that we had a number of stop signs. And you all asked us to take a look at that, and we have. We are at the mercy of one company that comes in and does the striping of the streets and laying down the stop bars and other kinds of things. And we thought it was going to take some time to schedule that. And lo and behold, I got a call at three o'clock this afternoon that the man could come in here tomorrow. So this is a late announcement, but we'll be posting it on Facebook as soon as this meeting is ended. And I just want to preface it by saying that the residents of this town and visitors have demonstrated a very positive response to the two-way traffic changes. There are some people who are ignoring the stop signs, but they are fewer and fewer each day. And as a result of the feedback from you all as council members and residents about the intersection of East Main and Third Street and the several stop signs effective tomorrow, probably in the afternoon, the painted stop bar that's on East Main and those arrows will be removed at the intersection of East Main and Duncan. And motorists will have to just yield to the flow of traffic as opposed to stopping, which is what they had to do when the street was one-way and somebody wanted to turn onto Duncan. And that will then allow, by removing that stop bar and those signs, the westbound traffic on Main to continue to flow. We will be putting dotted or dashed lines. We will be putting dotted or dashed lines to make sure people understand that they can flow directly through, and we will be removing the stop sign that's at the intersection of East Main and close to Duncan. So there'll only be one actually new stop sign, because there has always been a stop sign at Duncan, so we'll remove the stop sign at East Main's intersection. The only stop sign will be on Third Street.
It'll be free-flowing, it'll be free-flowing on Main Street.
You only stop when you're coming in.
Right. And we've talked about that with the police, we've talked with the Public Works people, and you mentioned Chris Phillips, he's so dedicated to this community, it's unbelievable. And Chris has a passion for safety and for those roads, and we've worked with him and with our chief of police and others, and we've determined that we think this is a very reasonable step now that people seem to be responding well, so we will put that into effect as soon as the company is able to remove those markings, and we'll go ahead and take that stop, that one stop sign down, so you will see a slightly different pattern there.
That's great.
I think it's been a huge success, or a huge, it's been a positive change, it really has, and I'm anxious to see Main Street once it's done and the sidewalks are redone. I think that's going to be a game changer for-
It might also be a good time to remind people, because I've personally had this conversation a few times, that the reason we haven't completely repaved Main Street, West Main Street, is because we're waiting to redo the, it doesn't, I know it's, we feel like a broken record, but you know, every, everybody has different ways of getting information, and-
I had that conversation today.
I had it yesterday.
Interestingly, I've noticed on Facebook that people are giving that answer to other writers, because they have-
It takes time.
Or seen it, you know, so they're now being-
Yep.
-spokespeople for the town in that regard, but you can't say some things too much to get the message through. But we will be making this officially available if I send it out on Facebook and to the media, which I'm sure at least they are probably listening or will watch the reruns, as I call them, of the meetings tonight. I do want to thank you all for your patience in going through this long agenda tonight of the various public hearings, and I want to just say one more time, based upon not only the comments that some of you and people in the audience have made, but you have an outstanding staff here. You really have dedicated people who want the best for this town and don't often get compliments, often get a lot of criticism, or deal with difficult people, but they are very committed to being good stewards of this town, and we've come a long way in the budget process, we've had a lot of involvement this year of the department heads, not only in preparing their budgets, but then in some instances, defending their budgets with a budget committee that was put in place, and then in helping us to make the cuts that were necessary in order to balance the budget. And all of that, I think, is putting the town's financial situation in a better condition. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
All right. With that, that'll bring us to the reminder of future council meetings. Our next council meeting will be June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, closed session at six, open session will begin at seven, and as I have nothing else on my agenda, I declare this meeting adjourned.